All right, welcome everybody to our August 23rd study session of the Vancouver School District Board of Directors. We are going to get started with our meeting by doing roll call. Director Decker.
I'm here.
Director Smith.
Here.
Director Sproul.
Here.
And Director Zavala.
Here.
And I am also here. We are all here. So to get started with our agenda tonight, I am going to turn it over to Dr. Snell.
Thank you so much, Director Barrows. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Our study session here in August, our last meeting before the 22-23 school year, which is crazy hard to believe. Just a couple of short updates on back to school. One week from today, we'll welcome all of our students, our kindergarteners this year. As you recall, are having a delayed start so our kindergarten teachers can meet with families and students and and welcome them back a little more individually. But the rest of our student population will be joining us a week from today. Just left the bait center where we have the remote. If anybody wants to come and watch the meetings onsite, and we have a welcome center going on there. And so we've been having a lot of families come in to enroll there. It's always great to to see our staff supporting them, lots of smiling faces and questions getting answered and things like that. So it's been a great week since we last talked. We've been welcoming our our teachers and counselors and with every day, it seems like there's a group that's working on some training and we've had the pleasure to introduce them, welcome them back to the school year and do some of that. And one of our topics today, the PLC update, Jim and Carrie are going to give you kind of a little rundown on the year ahead, but also a pretty exciting training that we had last Friday with a bunch of staff and principals. So that's what's been kind of on the radar here. Happy to answer any questions about back to school. I know that you all are going to try to get out and visit schools the best you can and balance your professional life as well with your service life. And see what you can do. So we're looking forward to hosting you and welcoming back our kids. Any questions or comments? Okay, well, we have three main content areas tonight for the study session, and each of these three are really, I think, very important, not just for the short term, but also when we think about a five-year plan that we've talked about with adopting an equity policy and looking at our future and some of our priorities as a district. And then also thinking about sustainability from a revenue and expenditure standpoint. And so the topics tonight all kind of fall into those areas. So the sustainability piece is you're going to hear from Brett Blex Schmidt, talk a little about the levy scenarios that I know that you've been thinking about. We have a expiring levy, and so we're going to be going out to our community again and ask them to renew that support. We have some friends, our consultants, that will be joining us to talk about strategic planning. They interviewed you in late school year and took all that information and put together a plan for you. And this will be reflected in a contract that will come before you in September. So it's an opportunity to look through that and give any feedback on it. And then we'll also have, as I mentioned, Jim and Carrie giving an update on our collaborative work and how we're coming together as a professional staff to really rally around the needs of our students. So moving into the first presentation this evening, the strategic planning portion. And throughout this, as you all know, you're welcome to unmute and ask any questions at any point or also at the end. Feel free, you can go back at any point. But I want to talk a little about what we laid out with the strategic plan from scope and sequence, high level, and then turn it over to our partners tonight. And so really this year is about listening and learning and really going out to our community. Really trying to to hear from voices that maybe haven't had a chance to share their perspective on what's going well and ideas that they have that we can do better. And then also thinking about the equity policy and how do we live that, right? How do we put that into action? And then starting late next spring, the idea is that we would take that that feedback and what we learned and start to draft a path forward. And so and then from there, the the following years of this five-year plan would be around amplifying that plan and implementing. And then implementation and then starting the cycle again, right, to revisit where we're at as a district. So really high level and I'm really excited to introduce you to Lisa and John L. And I think if you haven't seen if you were able to get promoted. So are you on the call now, Lisa and Janelle?
We are, Dr. Snell.
Thank you so much. I'm going to turn it over to you both, and then I will drive the slides. But maybe first, just an introduction and Lisa joins us from Point North and Janelle from Espousal and they're partnering organizations that have delivered on this kind of work and are working in our communities right now with other engagement strategies. So we're really glad to have them here tonight. So I'll turn it over to you and just let me know when you want me to move these slides.
Thank you, Dr. Snell. We are thrilled to be here. Appreciate the opportunity to be able to share a little bit of the story in terms of where we've been since we had the opportunity to meet with you each individually and really hear that insight as we work with the VPS leadership team to really put forth a strategy and approach that really meets, I think, not only the students of VPS needs, but also all the way up to the board and the vision for VPS graduates moving forward. So I am excited to be here with John L. So we're going to tag team the presentation a bit, happy to answer questions as we go through the presentation. So with that, I think we're probably ready for the next slide. Thank you. So as we've been thinking about how to really take the incredible work that's been done over the past almost a couple decades, just in terms of how the district thinks about the future of the Vancouver Public Schools and what a vision for the next five years might look like. And we've spent time, I think, as Dr. Snell mentioned, really trying to listen and to learn and to reflect a strategy that really meets what we believe to be those project objectives that are so important to make sure that we're aligned on and reflect that through the approach and what we'll share a little bit in terms of some of those details of that approach. So the next slide really speaks to the details that really outline kind of those next five years, how we set up for the next five years. And what we heard from stakeholders internally, from members of the board, was really a priority to engage the community, to meet them where they are, to listen, to amplify equity priority communities, and to do that in a long-term and sustainable community engagement practice. So what you'll hear from John L. and I today are some best practices, some things that we believe have worked really well to elevate voices of equity, but to really ensure all voices are being heard, that there are multiple ways in which we're engaging and that we're taking that feedback and being able to share that feedback, reflect it in the vision and the strategy moving forward. And we also heard centering the approach on the good work that the board has already done with the leadership team to develop the equity policy and to advance those learning experiences for each student. So it's important that all of these are threaded together within that vision and that strategic approach. And we want to create a vision that is reflective of where the community is, internal community and external community. What does it mean to be a VPS graduate? What are the possibilities? And to develop a strategic plan that's reflective of those. We also want to ensure that the plan lives on beyond our time in this process. So having clear accountable decision-making with measurable outcomes is a key part of what we're trying to achieve. So not only being open to listening and to learning, but also creating a plan that can be achievable and that accountable for folks in the district and at that governing in this room as well. So the approach is very similar to the approach that we saw in the RFP. We've refined it a bit with the leadership team. We believe that first most important phase is really around ensuring that we have alignment on the project objectives and planning. One of the areas that we're hearing beyond that equity policy is just really making sure that we're setting up the project for success. Everyone understands their roles and that we're setting those roles up so that they are really operationalized in the future. So the idea of VPS really showing up and doing community engagement today as a model for how we continue to do community engagement in the future, not just within this project and this process. And then also trying to ensure that the way in which we speak about strategic planning is approachable, it's welcoming, it creates a sense of belonging. The word strategic planning tends to not do that. It feels a bit cold and corporate. So that's a big part of kind of how we're thinking about how we set the project up for success. And then certainly, the next phase really being intentional community engagement and really centering around meeting our community where they are. We also want to spend time ensuring that we are analyzing data, we're developing the plan, and then we're amplifying the plan. So when we ask community members for their feedback, we can thread that story through the plan development. We're able to be able to reflect back how our community has provided meaningful input and how it's helped to to shape our plan and or if it's not within the strategic plan, where that feedback might be most useful and helpful. So that's a bit of kind of the overall what we're hoping to achieve together. And then the approach to achieving that strategic plan that we really believe can be equity centered with a pretty significant community engagement component. Okay, I think I will pass it to Janelle for the next slide.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. And good evening, Board of Directors. As Lisa indicated, one of the things we heard loudly and clearly from all of you, and thank you again for the opportunity of spending time with us for the interviews. But one of the things we heard all of you, as well as the superintendent and members of the cabinet, really emphasized was equity. And so we wanted to just point out a couple of things as a result of unpacking the 2020 census as well as the American Community Survey. Of course, this won't come as a significant surprise to many of you, but just a couple of highlights. The district had a 15% increase in the district boundaries from 140,000 to 160,000 residents, which includes a 68% growth by your communities of color. So in terms of raw numbers, that's from approximately 30,000 to just over 50,000. And what's pretty phenomenal about this measure and what we've seen on other projects relative to southwest Washington and Clark County, is if you look at the regional growth, the primary driver has been growth in Clark County. And when you dissect the growth of Clark County, most of the folks are among persons of color. When you look at the growth of Clark County, and so you're seeing that be reflected in the school district as well. When you look at down below your internal district performance scorecard, just over half of students district-wide receive free or reduced lunch. That's going to be really important measure as we start to think about engagement activities. How do we really reach those families and communities? 44% are a race ethnicity, besides white and non-Hispanic. That's pretty significant. If you think about the diversity within your classrooms and 96 languages are spoken. So again, how do we really ensure that we have a robust strategy by which we can reach many of these languages? Just about one in six students are English language learners and just about one in six students receive special services. And so this becomes a very important backdrop as we think about engagement strategies as well as lifting up your equity policy and your equity stated objectives. So Lisa, back to you.
We have put together a bit of a timeline to make sure that we are moving quickly through this process, but not so fast that we aren't taking the time to listen. And so we believe that this is an achievable timeline to be back in front of you the fall of 2023 with a plan that has centered equity and infused real intentional community engagement. And so we see really the work that's been done over the summer to really align around what we're trying to achieve. Beginning that community engagement in the fall and winter, really wrapping that up from a strategic planning perspective around March and then diving into data analysis, developing the strategic plan, and then being back in front of you in the fall of 2023. You'll see, we noted there's an arrow that says community engagement because this is not certainly the end of that community engagement. But we want to be able to get to a place where we feel like we've collected really good insight on this particular process so that we can kind of wrap up that feedback and use it to really inform the development of the plan, but the community engagement by the district continues on. Okay, Janelle, I think you're back up.
This is your slide, Lisa.
Okay, this is my slide. So equity-centered engagement goals. Really, there's three that we consistently heard, and that was that engagement needs to be inclusive, it needs to be accessible, and it needs to be culturally responsive. And so what does that mean? That means that kind of our three primary goals really are around how do we hear the community and lift more voices? How do we empower people into action? And then how do we nurture trust and long-lasting relationships? So you've heard me already mention more than once that what we're really trying to do is in partnership, create a community engagement approach that really continues to do the great engagement work that's been done and does things differently and does more engagement. And that then becomes the model for what VPS is doing in terms of how we engage the community and how we meet our community members where they are. So we really do believe that that last piece is so important because it is reflective of what we're hearing is the direction and the vision for VPS and really sets the strategic plan on a path for success. Okay, next slide.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. One of the things we heard from all of you as well as district leadership is the importance to really ensure that this process reaches all of your key and critical stakeholders. And so we have really attempted to capture vignettes, if you will, of what that experience might look like throughout the course of this process. We start with students. And the highlight there is students' voices will be amplified in focus groups and surveys throughout this process. We will ensure that there are ample opportunities for students to provide feedback in this process. Families, that families will be included within the process and their voices will be heard. We'll make sure that the process is accessible, as indicated again prior with your changing demographic. It's going to be really important that we work with a number of avenues to highlight opportunities. Your staff in faculty will be represented on the core team as well as being engaged in workshops, focus groups, and surveys throughout this process. And we'll be finding unique and creative ways of working with your community partners. There's a lot of excitement in the community about VPS. So we want to build upon that. Potentially working with, for example, the foundation as well as other business and community stakeholders to really amplify the voices of the community. Next slide, please. There are really kind of core, four cornerstones or sort of tenants, if you will, relative to our outreach activities. The first is to have a robust engagement workshop. This will be a workshop that we will roll up our sleeves with the VPS team to really develop a community engagement plan. The importance of the plan is that it will guide engagement for this process and in the future. And so a lot of the elements that we've highlighted today will become part and partial integral part of that plan. We'll rely a lot on focus groups. We'll have four focus groups to glean insights from equity priority voices using thought exchange as one input tool. And that's been a critical way in which we have had successes reaching hard-to-reach populations will ensure that we have ASL as well as interpreters. Next slide, please. We'll also ensure that we are out in the community, meeting the community where they are. This is a really exciting opportunity to work with your culturally specific organizations, your nonprofits, your community-based organizations to co-produce curated outreach opportunities, meeting community where they are in ways in which they are comfortable and feel safe to engage. So we'll be working a lot to work with those community partners to provide opportunities for engagement. And then creating an opportunity for a thought leadership event again, in partnership, potentially with the foundation to bring together your business and civic and other key stakeholders who have a vested interest in what happens in this process and will want to be engaged. Next slide, please. Back to you, Lisa.
Another key aspect of the engagement is both leveraging your existing advisory groups that provide input as well as forming an additional group, which will be a strategic planning advisory group. And so we see in September activating the existing groups that you already have in place, and we have a chart to kind of show how that might work. And then also doing some recruiting specifically for the strategic planning advisory group so that it is a mix of internal and external stakeholders. And we have found in our work together that often we need to spend intentional time seeking those members of the community that don't typically raise their hand to be involved in an advisory group of this nature. And so we want to allow enough time for that very direct recruiting to occur and then stand up that strategic planning advisory group in October. So we've listed kind of what the role of that advisory group is. Again, really lean on the word advisory. So they would be able to provide input. We see them as being both capable of helping us to share the message of what work is being done, what work is yet to be done, when there are key engagement opportunities to help spread the word. And then really to, once we start receiving some of that critical engagement feedback, it's to be able to start to take that feedback and help us work through how that how that really becomes goals and objectives that help us develop the plan. This next slide really kind of shows a bit of kind of the system of advisory groups. And so we see multiple, the multiple advisory groups that are either already in place or already planned to be in place. So student advisory, community, family, and staff being a part of this strategic planning advisory group, the equity advisory committee that you already have in place also playing a critical role, the cabinet and leadership. And so the idea here is that each of these advisory groups have a role in strategic planning, and they're all working within the structure of this new strategic planning advisory group. We see the advisory group being stood up for this project. So there would be a set kind of role and timeline. We're envisioning right now about six meetings, and we've got those really kind of set to be at key moments where we're asking community and internal stakeholders to weigh in on specific information before an event or after an event. So again, we're really being able to utilize that group as an advisory group that helps to be able to advise the plan development as it goes before the superintendent and in front of you as the board. So these are all components of how we really are envisioning collecting information, being able to analyze that information, and then develop the goals that when we get to the end of this process, we're hoping that we'll hear comments like, I haven't been involved before. I felt like my voice was heard. We're hoping that we'll hear feedback from stakeholders as to this plan reflects what I believe the direction, future of VPS is. And so we see all of these really working together in collaboration with this team as well as, you know, the the VPS leadership team to accomplish the project objectives we mentioned at the very beginning. I think this might be our last slide. So we are open to any questions that you might have. Happy to answer any. Really appreciate the time with me tonight.
Thank you, Lisa and Janelle. We really appreciate you walking us through that. Director Barrows, do you want to pause? How do we want to? We gave a lot of information to you about kind of the overall plan, the engagement strategies, and then kind of the leadership structure of how to move it forward. So we'd just love to get any insight from Board Directors.
Yeah, I think pausing and if anybody else has directors, I first of all, I want to say thank you for this information. I can definitely see throughout the information presented in the timeline and kind of the focus that you really have integrated the input that we had. And I'm excited just to really get started and just to hear from our community. I think it's it's apparent that that was a really important part to us and that you guys have heard that. So I'm excited just for all the opportunities for our community to provide input so that it's not just, you know, a plan that the board creates, but that it's really a strategic plan that reflects our community. So do any of you guys have questions or directors?
Hi, excuse me. I have one question, similar to what Director Barrows said. Thank you for this presentation. I definitely felt that our feedback was heard, well heard. So I'm interested in the community engagement sessions. I love that you're approaching it from many different angles to ensure that we are collecting input and feedback from our entire community, not just the common voices. I'm curious in those sessions if there'll be kind of how you'll prompt the feedback. I mean, are there going to be content-specific theme, like theme nights or? You know, I'm just trying to get my head around because, you know, what do you think about VPS? It's pretty open-ended, but and I I don't need a lot of detail, but I'm curious kind of how you'll kind of start, how you'll prompt that feedback and how you'll make sure that we are touching on things like student achievement and you know, post-graduation goals and early childhood to make sure that we're gathering feedback on the whole spectrum of our system. Does that make sense?
Dr. Snell, do you want to respond first? Do you want us to?
It's something that we've discussed quite extensively. Really appreciate Lisa and John L.'s patience because we went back and forth on these things and really tried to emphasize with the budget capacity that we have for this, like really focused on the community engagement part and you know, relying maybe on district staff or some of those other components because of the expertise that John L. and Lisa bring to us as a local partner. And so I'll maybe defer and let you all talk a little about some of the strategies you're thinking and then maybe I can wrap it up with some other stuff that we were talking about.
Thank you.
So Janelle, I'll look to you to lean in here as well. So I think what we're hoping to achieve is utilizing multiple tools to collect information. So I think we all know that just doing a survey is not going to be enough, and just doing a listening group isn't enough. So the idea that we need to bridge both qualitative and quantitative feedback is really important. We also need to make sure that we have some consistency in the data that we're collecting. So we'll likely ask a series of questions at every engagement opportunity so that we can make sure that we've got, we've collected that feedback and we can utilize that feedback as we develop the plan. Depending on the audience, we may ask the question slightly differently in a different way. And we may ask additional questions, but I think the way in which Dr. Snell has already set up that initial first thought exchange where it's kind of hopes and dreams, we'll do some broad questions like that, and then we'll want to narrow in. But we'll be looking for feedback as we put together that list of questions because the questions have to really be thoughtful because they need to be able to be threaded into the plan development. So I'm sure we'll get lots of feedback, some of which will make sense in the strategic plan and some of which will be really good feedback for the district moving forward. So I'll just pause and Janelle, do you have other comments or feedback?
No, I think that's spot on. It's also one of the topics for the engagement workshop that we'll want to work with the team on to really drill down and roll up our sleeves and kind of come up with what those and kind of come up with what those potential prompts might be as well as working with our community-based partners, particularly the community-based organizations focused on our culturally specific community to ensure that we are in fact posing questions in a way that will elicit the type of feedback, both that's intentional as well as is going to be meaningful for this process.
Thank you both. I think just to wrap up, we are trying to also think about organizing the feedback. Director Sproll, in terms of like access would be one. So that would include time and space and physical structures and, you know, things of that nature. And then engagement, another level of what happens when we have provided access. We think about support enrichment. We think about partnerships. So really trying to think about broad categories that would allow potential themes to emerge. To your point of maybe not being, how is VPS doing that broad? But also not so specific that we're eliminating potential inputs.
No, I appreciate that. That helps a lot just kind of how we're going to navigate these conversations. And I absolutely agree, we can't be too specific. We'll be leading the answers.
So I have one quick question. And on the, the specific advisory, the strategic plan advisory group about recruiting, how many people are you thinking? And I ask this because I know when we were looking for community, community members to help with our superintendent search, it was hard to narrow who we asked, how many people, from where, because you just kept feeling like you would, every time you thought you had, it was like, but we're leaving this group out and we're leaving that group out. And so I'm just curious as to what the thought is on how to develop that.
So I'll start with that one and then please add Lisa and Janelle if there's other thoughts. So first of all, as Lisa described, we're going to use some existing advisories that already have a membership base. You know, obviously the student advisory is new this year. We started that last year, but we're going to be drawing from those students. The family advisory group, we do have some structures in place currently through our FCRCs, but we probably need to enhance that a little bit to make sure that that advisory group is robust enough to include, as you're mentioning Kathy, a lot of different stakeholders in the community. And then the staff advisory group will be a new one. We don't have a function, we have like labor management meetings. We have certainly partnerships with staff, but we don't have like a formal staff advisory group. So that's one that we'll have to launch. Now, when we think about the size of these groups, we want to be representative, but we want to allow people in the groups to speak, right? And to feel comfortable in sharing. And so these groups are largely in the twenties to thirties. When we think of the existing community advisory group, when we think about the equity advisory committee, they're about that size, our student advisory is about that size as well. And then the idea is that each of these advisory groups would send two to three to four members to the larger strategic planning group. And so also the facilitators of those groups would move forward into that strategic planning advisory group. And our partners would be alongside of that, of us through this process as consultants. But really, we're the ones facilitating this work. As Lisa said, the goal is not that we do this one year and then it goes away, but we learn through the process and we continue this kind of a process year after year. So Janelle Ephraim would be the facilitator of the equity advisory committee and she would attend the strategic planning advisory group as well. I'm facilitating the student advisory, so I would be a part of that with some students as well. Bill Omen and Janelle Ephraim are going to co-facilitate the strategic planning advisory group and I will be a participant in that group instead of the facilitator. And then the thinking on that is that we would do similar to the transition team group that we had last year, is that we would invite board directors two at a time to come to these meetings so they could meet the group, understand what's working, have some context for how, where the recommendations might come from, but not be participants in those groups, but be more observers. Certainly like you did with the transition team, able to join into conversations and offer ideas, but also recognizing that this group is here for you to help make recommendations and to give you some different perspectives on that. So that, I hope, does that kind of help Kathy? Lisa, Janelle, anything to add to that?
I think you covered it pretty well. I think the only other piece that we might mention is that the balance of that group outside of the group that's made up of the existing advisory groups allows for you to do some strategic recruiting to be able to fill that group. So, which I agree tends to sometimes be a little bit challenging, but you've got so many key representatives already within those existing groups. So our hope is that that'll be a really great opportunity to pull in some voices that maybe haven't traditionally been involved in some of these groups in the past.
Good questions. Are there other questions about the process? You might have noted on the timeline that we did extend it a little longer. I think originally we were thinking about having a plan adopted in the late spring, early summer. And we're talking about extending this into the fall, thinking about next year at this time, where we're really finalizing some work, bringing it forward to you, bringing that strategic planning advisory group back together for one more time, knowing that over the summer, there can be a lot of behind-the-scenes work, but not wanting that behind-the-scenes work to be the final touch on it, but wanting to go once again out to the public through the board meetings. And really that would start our amplification process for the implementation cycle of whatever priorities and goals emerge. All right. Well, Janelle and Lisa, thank you so much for joining us this evening and we look forward to working with you. This will be an item on the September work, our board meeting to the consideration of a contract for this partnership to help us facilitate this work. In our committee, the whole meeting, we had a placeholder that said strategic planning work. And so this is to fill you in on the details of that. And we will include that in the board packet so you can see kind of the itemized look at what this work entails. Okay?
Great, thank you all. See you soon.
Thank you.
So Director Barrows, do you want me to just keep introducing our guests? All right, for our PLC update in the late spring, Jim Gray and Carrie Van Oostrein co-presented. This was a goal area for the district last year and they shared where we were at. And I've asked them to come back and give you an update on the plans and talk about the year ahead. So I'll turn it over to them and I'll drive the slides for you both.
Thanks, Jeff. Good evening, directors. It's so great to be back here again with my co-leader in this work, Carrie, to give you an update on where we're at. If you go to the next slide, as a point of quick review, Jeff, if you'll click on the PLC reboot at the top. Thank you. And as part of the WASA PLC project that we are part of, we have a five-year plan. Hopefully this will come up, okay? We showed this to you in the, in the spring very briefly, but Jeff, if you'll scroll down really quickly to where it says implementation process and a little bit of the five-year plan, thank you. So the district PLC, which is all of us in Vancouver Public Schools, including yourselves, is really broken up into four different teams and that's the superintendent board team, the district-level guiding coalition, the building-level guiding coalition, and of course our PLCs that do the bulk of the work. As we work on communication cycles up and down the system, we look at creating this five-year plan and how it relates to meeting our outcomes. So as you'll see at the top, it says train, implement, maintain and refine. So as we look at training, that's pretty straightforward. This year, we're going to train to look at next year implementing, the next year after that maintaining and then refining. So you see in front of you really kind of the rough outline of that five-year plan. So go ahead and go back, Jeff, please. I bring that up because as we look at the focus, the two focus for this year, keep in mind that this is about training with looking at next year fully implementing these ideas. So this year's focus is on creating and implementing a guiding coalition. Vancouver Public Schools has been doing guiding coalition, excuse me, PLCs for 10 to 12 years with varied amounts of success. We have islands of excellence across our district. We've done some phenomenal work specifically at the teacher level with implementing essential standards, common formative assessments and really driving work of PLCs. What we haven't done a great job of is really setting a culture of supporting PLCs and that really begins with a guiding coalition. A guiding coalition would be a group of people, staff members specifically, administration and predominantly teachers at each building that really would support and implement the goals of the building and really facilitate the communication feedback up and down. What we've missed, quite honestly, and I think Carrie would agree with me on this, is a really real partnership at the district level and at the building level to ensure that this happens consistently across the system. Now bear also in mind that this is, at the end of the day, this is about student outcomes, but the focus of PLCs is really a job embedded, relevant PD experience and puts the best, our teachers in the best possible position to be successful in the classroom. So we're going to focus on creating and implementing guiding coalitions this year, training those groups. Two, the second focus is on a guaranteed viable curriculum, identifying, teaching and assessing essential standards across the system. Another area where we've done a ton of work over the last 78 years, COVID obviously got in the way, Lisa did some teacher as designer work also. We have done some of that initial work and we're, so we don't have to start from square one, but there's another area where really the people that should be deeply embedded in telling the system what the essential standards are, are the people in the classroom. So that's another area where we'll be focusing on this year. So there's been a lot of discussion over the years on, you know, how do we go about this work? How do we ensure consistency across the system? And really it breaks down into our five commitments. This is what we're going to be tight on as a system. They're listed there for you and I'll briefly go through them. And they are to work in collaborative teams and take collective responsibility for student learning to implement a guaranteed viable curriculum. Again, at this point, that's those essential standards. We're going to monitor student learning with frequent team-developed common formative assessments. Now, a common form of assessments at the building level, as we know, we'll be reporting out student learning four times a year. At this point, it'll be predominantly I-ready and SBA results, but that starts the process of communicating up and down the system on students proficiency towards standards. The fourth commitment is using, use evidence of student learning to identify the practices that are working and discontinue those that don't. Huge piece there. And then five, provide systematic interventions and enrichment. So that's just a brief overview of the focus for this year. We are partnering with Solution Tree to provide a training around guiding coalition. And Friday was our first opportunity for that. And Carrie, so lucky she gets to tell us a little bit about that. I'm fired up for us.
Thank you, Jeff, and thank you to the crew this evening for an opportunity to share a little bit more as this work unfolds. It's been a meaningful partnership opportunity already. And I think the process really aligns with what we heard during the strategic planning communication around providing space and opportunity for listening, empowering within the system and really fortifying trust and relationship. And that hand-in-hand building administrator and educator co-lead partnership at each building is kind of the starting point for guiding coalition development. And so Jim and I, plus several executive directors, had an opportunity to listen in on conversations across buildings, including administrator and educator perspective, kind of re-centering. You can see the agenda for Friday's experience, re-centering around some of the PLC basics that we already know and love. So there was some renewed learning that took place, but also diving deeply into the concept of how a guiding coalition works again hand-in-hand as opposed to having things happen to you. We help empower educators within the building to take ownership of the process so that they're addressing student need and then communicating out what additional supports might be needed for them to do the best that they can on behalf of the students that they serve. So I will say, the process that we went through to organize the partnerships per building was a really meaningful and intentional first step where building principles obviously play a key role in helping facilitate this work at the building level. And then to identify who their partner in crime or co-lead for the guiding coalition was, incorporated both administrator input and staff input at each building to help land on who they mutually agreed to based on a set of criteria for most meaningful qualifications to partner in this work. And so that tag team per building kind of spread. We got real cozy in the upstairs area of JPC to do some shared learning together. And as I mentioned, it anchored in some of the PLC nuts and bolts that we're already familiar with, but really leveraged into what we can and will accomplish collaborating as we develop a broader guiding coalition beyond just these two kind of co-leads or facilitators and who we might be looking for to incorporate, what the scope of it might look like for the building and then reinforcing and as Jim alluded to, the communication loop that we have responded to based on school board and superintendent communication down. And then we appreciate the opportunity to provide that communication loop back up as to how things are progressing from here and really in the future around some specific supports we may need in the process. But we're excited to model that process for ongoing communication. We've already solicited feedback on Friday's experience to help gauge kind of key takeaways, what their committed one next step as a tag team might be per building and then what supports or questions they'd like to see clarified and what they might be looking for in our next session when all of us come back together again, September 27th. So again, the day one experience was very high energy considering it was a sunshiny Friday, but really rich, candid, honest, sometimes difficult conversations about the reality of our current experience, where we want to be and then what are some of the pieces that we will need to partner around district and educators alike to make this happen for students. And as Jim alluded to, for the staff as a meaningful professional development opportunity. So we look forward to future opportunities to be able to report back, but also want to honor the fact that the communication loop goes both ways. So with this kind of mini-update at this stage, we would welcome questions from board directors, but also suggestions based on what you've heard thus far so that we can ensure that we're driving, we're forward, informed by your perspective in addition to building administrators and educators that are a part of the guiding coalition. And then as they will pay forward, engaging folks on teacher teams at the building level as well.
Thank you, Jim and Carrie. And just like last presentation, Director Barrows, so just open it up for any questions or comments from you.
Well, I want to say, listening to the two of you talk is just so exciting. I'm like so excited for this work. And I, and I've said this before and I'll keep saying it because I know this work is, the potential for what this work can do for our community is astounding when you think about it in the long term. And it's so hard though to do the work in the step-by-step way we need to do it in order to have the outcomes that we want. Because the excitement of wanting to be at the end, like this is, this is what we can do, is, is sometimes going to want us to push faster than we're really ready for. And I love having the staff and the administrator kind of figure out who that partner was going to be with the administrator. I think that's really key because to have that trust between both components is, it will, it won't work unless the staff is really behind what's happening. And so I love it and I'm so excited and it makes me want to jump in with you. So thank you for sharing that.
Thank you, Director Decker.
I'll just say, I really appreciated the visual of the maintain, implement and train. I think to Kathy's point, it shows that it's a very methodical process, but really creating good habits takes time to really instill. But that was a, that infographic was very helpful to kind of. creating good habits takes time and to really instill. But that was a, that infographic was very helpful to kind of see how it's going to play out.
Thank you, Director Sproul.
Jeff, could I add one item kind of connected to Kathy and Kyle's comment? The extended runway to be intentional and methodical was also a noted sigh of relief during Friday's experience, recognizing that this is a training year for developing your guiding coalition, that if we set up successfully from the outset has the leveraging opportunity to make positive impacts for teacher teams and for student outcomes. And so they don't need to put it together right away. There are steps and guidance that they'll receive during the training experience along the way. And that same level of intentionality informed with input from both levels is how we hope to see that kind of four step sequence with each of the five commitments over the five years play out. So thank you for the grace and flexibility for an extended runway so that we get it right this time.
Thanks, Carrie. And I also appreciate, you know, the board is looking at, as Jim referenced, the, the common formative assessment data. And this year we'll, we'll be using I ready because we don't really have district wide common assessments. But we hope to empower teachers to, to be able to help us with that in the future. But that really sets the, the tone for the whole districts looking at data, right? And it's not a dachy kind of thing. It's just we're looking at it to try to make good decisions and to prioritize resources for kids that need it most. Or staff that need it most to, to support those kids. So I appreciate your adoption of the policy, the equity policy and then codifying the goal around student learning. And all these things are connected and hopefully as you know, as Carrie made the connection to the strategic planning thing, every presentation we do should have a common through line, right? That you can kind of see, oh, that reminds me of what we're doing here. So we really appreciate the direction that the board has provided us. Maybe the last thing is part of the site visits this year, I know that you all love to be in our schools. Especially engaging with students, but we're going to try to create a couple of experiences where maybe you can meet with some of the maybe some of the folks that are in these trainings and talk to them about their experiences. Maybe sit in on some PLC time with staff and just understand. I know that you as a board do constantly ask about, well, what can we do to help the situation, you know, to help improve? And so we want to provide you some opportunities to engage with, with our staff that are doing the work.
And I'd just like to say, both Carrie and Jim, if you guys have ideas about how we can how we can be a part, like watch or engage maybe at a training or maybe you think it's better if we're at a PLC, whatever you guys, because you guys are the ones that are like guiding this forward. Whatever you two believe is the best way for us to see the work that's happening. Let us know. Because that way we, we're being guided by you as well.
Any other questions or thoughts on this topic? Okay, then I'll queue up our third and final presentation tonight. Thank you, Carrie, and thank you, Jim. And turn it over to Brett. As you know, in our last board meeting, we had just a second here, sorry, I gotta share my screen again. We adopted the twenty two, twenty three budget and really appreciate Brett walking us through and helping conduct the public hearing related to that. And in adopting that budget, Brett had referenced the upcoming levy and the expiration of that levy and going out to the voters February fourteenth of this twenty twenty three for renewal. And we need to start engaging you in some conversation about what you want to see on that ballot for the renewal. And so I'm going to turn it over to Brett and like the other presentations, please feel free to interrupt at any point and offer questions or feedback. Oh, actually Brett, were you, you were going to drive this at this point because of the
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and jump on the screen share if you want to.
About that, I forgot.
Oh, no, no worries.
I'll turn it over to you.
All right. All right. Well, thank you. Yeah, I think it's our last topic for tonight. So certainly jump in if you have questions. I'll try to pause for some conversation at a couple of strategic points, but otherwise we'll just go ahead and dive right in here. And so obviously we're, we're focusing on and need to emphasize in all of our conversations as well as the communications with the community, this is a replacement education and operations levy, not a new tax. And we always kind of start with, and it's a little muddled this year as we'll probably reference at a couple of different points. We haven't had the last couple of years of really consistent funding from the state and in relation to our expenditures due to enrollment drops due to COVID and disruptions in the instructional models that we're offering. And then certainly the, the influx of federal funding has been further distorted kind of where we typically would spend our levy dollars. So just a couple, just high level examples is where we're going to stay at this point. And then as we continue to develop our communications, we'll, we'll have a little bit more detail. But again, it's kind of an atypical situation where we can't say, well, you know, year in and year out, it's always this many counselors out of the levy or year in and year out, it's this many teachers. But what we do know is that the state, even though they've improved the funding, for example, nurses, it's still dramatically below the need that we have. And so the example we're sharing here is the state is up to eleven nurses before it was less than four, I believe, before this last legislative session. But we currently employ about nineteen nurses, which, you know, is obviously a pretty light model in and of itself, but certainly relies on levy to get that far above that, again, eleven point one percent baseline. Eleven point one FTE baseline, excuse me. A couple of other examples, safety staff is, is one that we're always very mindful of. The state in their basic ed allocation provides four positions for all thirty seven schools that we have. We employ closer to thirty one. And so again, the need for a replacement levy is, is pretty substantial when we look at just a couple of these examples. And then just lastly, a couple of other consistent consumers of levy are extracurricular. We know that that's the sole source of extracurricular activities in the district. State provides zero funding there. And then special education, which again is our legal and moral mandate to, to provide that free and appropriate public education. Right now, the state and feds pay about eighty percent or eighty cents on the dollar for those required services. So the levy allows us to meet that, again, legal and moral obligation to those students. Without it, we would obviously have to take that out of other services to meet those, those legal obligations. So I mentioned that things have been a little bit upside down the last couple of years. So we're really trying to focus on two thousand nineteen, twenty, because we have some really good, both internal and, and looking at some comparator district information going back to two thousand nineteen, twenty. Which again, kind of is our most recent traditional year where we had no federal funding for COVID, but more stable enrollment driving our basic ed allocations. So I might be able to just pivot over to this. Yeah, that's probably faster and easier. So this particular bar chart has some interactivity to it, which hopefully will be enabled when we move over. But what you can see is the two thousand nineteen, twenty, which again is, is more of a standard relationship between our state and federal funding. The, kind of the big four, if you will, are going to be classroom teachers, extracurricular activities, school-based administration and special education are, are kind of our biggest bars here. And if you hover over the bars, we can kind of see how much per student out of the levy or how much total. We are relying on levy dollars. And again, in that traditional baseline year for each of these items. I mentioned the big four, but you can kind of scan the list. You kind of scan the list on the left there to see. It's a whole gamut of services and supports that we are able to provide in, in an enhanced way from the miniscule basic ed allocations. So those are just a couple of slides on kind of the traditional or typical consumers of levy dollars. Again, as we contemplate the next levy that certainly could change in some of these categories. I mentioned enhanced state funding for counselors, nurses and social work type positions. Will decrease our reliance on levy theoretically as we go into the next couple of years. So it is always a little bit elusive to pin it down on a year over year basis. But with that, I'll just pause if there's any questions on those traditional supports that the levy provides. All right, then we'll keep moving along. And if something comes up, we can certainly go back. Another consideration as we contemplate a replacement levy is always going to be what's that tax rate? Because that's really the way that our voters and our citizens are going to be able to understand the burden on them individually. And so we've had kind of a rocky recent history on total tax rates for school supports as a result of McCleary transitions. You can kind of look at this timeframe and say, clearly the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen years were before the McCleary adjustment and the, what's known as the levy swap. And then we see a couple of years in which that levy rate was I, I think statewide, the contention was it was, it was excessively constrained. And it was starving districts and students of resources that were necessary, which then allowed in two thousand twenty one that E and O rates to be able to come back up, but we needed voter support. And so it was, it was effective two thousand twenty one that our voters approved the supplemental E and O, kind of the first one after McCleary. And so that rose the E and O portion of it, which as you can see from the legend is the blue bar. Back up slightly over two dollars, the composite rate was about three dollars and seventy one cents. And then we've seen with assessed value increases, it kind of dropped pretty consistently over the next couple of years, which leads us into what we might want to look at for the renewal levy, the first year of the renewal levy would be two thousand twenty four. So you can see there's four options kind of identified there. And again, really what we're talking about is the blue bar, although as you can imagine, it all kind of plays together. When we look at the dynamics of the tech levy and the bond tax burden. Again, the four scenarios are for an E and O replacement levy of a dollar ninety five per thousand of assessed value, a dollar ninety seven, a dollar ninety nine and two oh five, I believe. So those are kind of the, after some informal conversations and feedback with the board, it felt like kind of that maybe just below two dollars was comfortable at least to a couple of perspectives that we heard. So I tried to kind of anchor right around that two dollar kind of tipping point there for this analysis. Now again, we don't have to decide this definitively until you pass a resolution in November. But certainly any guidance that you can provide and perspective to kind of help shape the conversations between now and November board meeting will, will certainly be welcome. Maybe I'll just go ahead and advance through the last couple of slides and then we can go, go back and talk about any particular. So that combined current two thousand twenty two tax burden for local school taxes of three dollars and fifty nine cents from the previous slide, where does that fit in kind of terms of the, the relative burden and investment of other districts in the county? You can see we're kind of just in that lower half, barely into the lower half. And again, I just footnote it there that the two lowest, one could argue are somewhat artificially constrained by the desperate need to pass bonds like many of the districts above them have. But their voters just haven't quite gotten over that hump yet and for, haven't allowed them to get over that hump yet. So when and if the bond were to pass in either of those districts, and we anticipate they'll continue to try until they pass it because the need is certainly great, we would anticipate that they may leapfrog us in this relative ranking. And then our last slide on this topic is just to kind of, again, I verbally addressed the kind of the orientation on timetable. We're obviously having this conversation today. Throughout October, excuse me, September and October, we'll certainly look at doing some public outreach in the form of phone surveys and other opportunities to gather feedback. Certainly allow you to continue to deliberate if, if there's not consensus yet. In anticipation of the November eighth board meeting, which would be the last opportunity to get the resolution passed in time to get it on the ballot. And again, with the ballots being mailed at the end of, towards the end of January for a February fourteenth election night. I just provided a quick link on the public outreach update. It's pretty dense data. So I'll just kind of maybe just do a quick little flyby here, just to anchor the fact that we're constantly trying to be as effective as possible with that outreach and certainly heard a lot of the conversations on the strategic plan. We think there's going to be some alignment to gathering feedback and perspective from the strategic plan that may inform some levy discussions. But certainly we're looking at the, the traditional phone survey that we've done for pretty much all funding measures in the past. There's some relative strengths and weaknesses of that that we've identified. Using some more online access points certainly has some strengths, but we want to be weary of who we're hearing from and, and how to measure that in terms of the broader community. And then there's certainly the opportunity to consider some hybrid type strategies and then in, in person, open house type focus groups. So we'll continue to evaluate all of those. We, again, we think there's some opportunity to possibly leverage strategic plan work with the levy planning. But yeah, that's kind of what we're thinking and what we're looking at now. We'll continue to evolve those plans to be as, as effective as possible. So that when we move into November and then certainly the information sharing that can happen from the district as well as possibly our levy or citizens committee, we know exactly kind of where the, where the community sensitivity and priorities are. So that's all I had to share. I don't know if you want me to stop sharing or leave this up in case there's questions.
Could you go back to the slide I think two prior with the bar graph? With the options? Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Brett. Yeah, I think we, we would love to just hear from board directors on kind of your thinking around looking forward and some of the options that are here. Also entertaining any questions on past funding or any of the other slides that Brett presented. But in particular, this slide, we'd love to hear your, your thinking. And then also on the strategies that Brett suggested, we'd love to hear any input that you have. It doesn't seem like there's one strategy that necessarily covers everything. And so staff at this point are leaning towards conducting some sort of phone survey, some sort of outreach electronically and then incorporating some of the feedback from the strategic planning outreach as well. But would love any input or direction that you might have on that. So I'll turn it over to you, Director Barrows, and then we'll be ready to try to respond to questions or take questions and come back to the board. As Brett mentioned, we have working back from November and a resolution.
Yeah, I'll, I guess I'll go ahead and start as far as kind of these options that are presented. You know, my, my own personal thoughts as somebody who obviously is very supportive of education and you know, wants to support education as much as possible. And seeing just how the levy dollars really do impact students and the supports and services we can provide. I mean, I tend to want to get as much out of a levy as we can. Which is why I'm like, oh, option four, we can ask for a lot, we can, we can try to get as much as we can, but I also recognize But I also recognize right now our community, um, I mean, we're assuming we're coming out, coming out of COVID um and kind of just coming out of pandemic. And I mean, things have been hard for a lot of people. Um, and so I keep that in mind in that not everybody there, there are a variety of financial situations that our community members are in. And so um that's kind of what I weigh in terms of, you know, let's ask for as much as we can versus we also need to keep in mind that there might be a tipping point to where people that normally support education are just financially cannot. I mean, because our goal, our goal is to pass the levy, and I think that's what I'm trying to balance is how, we have such a supportive community, but just financially, things are hard for a lot of people. So that probably isn't the best definitive answer or input. But I mean, that's kind of what I what I go by. I mean, so I kind of, I mean, while I would love to say, let's shoot for option four, I don't know that that's feasible for a lot of our community members, so trying to find kind of that balance, I'm not sure what it is. I don't know if other directors have thoughts.
Um, I'll go just real quickly. Uh, I think Brett, thank you earlier in the presentation for outlining all that we spend this money on. I mean, I think it's it's important for the public to understand how much of how we serve our students and the student experience is impacted by our local dollars. Um, and our community has been so generous to Vancouver Public Schools. Um, and I think it's a very pro-education uh community. I I um, I actually think that we should go with the lowest option as much as serving on the budget committee, and I understand the budget constraints, and so we do want to stretch our budget as much as possible. Um, I I definitely hear the um constraints that our community members are feeling right now just due to pandemic and economic uncertainties. And um, you know, uh, our our seniors, a lot of people were tired early in the pandemic. And I just want to be very, um, I think almost in a, um, because we've always been so well-supported by our community, I I want to support our community at this time. Um, so that's my my thought. And I do, I appreciate that all of the options that you presented are obviously sustainable for our budget. Um, some would give us a little bit more wiggle room than others. Um, and I also appreciate that the options really were all focused on um replacing the approximate rates. I mean, I think that was the the general, the strategy going into it. Um, and there's not a huge difference. I just um, this year, I I look back to when I was doing door knocking for the two thousand nineteen levy. And um, it's just uh the whole, the climate's so different now, what people are facing.
I guess I'm gonna jump in here. Um, Brett, can you tell us, are we looking at like the, what's the length of time we're looking at for this, for this potential levy?
Yeah, that's a great question. And again, I do believe there was pretty good consensus on the first um informal feedback around four years. And so what we would typically do, and that's a great question, and I don't think I, I know I didn't today, and I may not have in previous um formats shared. What we typically do is then estimate the assessed value growth, and then we inflate the the actual collection amount, which is what the voters are approving by that assessed, projected assessed value growth. So then in essence, we'd have the flat tax rate for the for the entire four years. Um, and then the collection would just simply uh increase by the, uh, and we typically are a little more conservative on the assessed value estimates. We wouldn't project another sixteen percent, for instance.
Um, I I think I'm kind of more or less reiterate what Tracy said. I think my my inclination on teacher, right? So obviously, I'd like to see as much money put into our schools as possible, um, because I know every dollar that's collected is is working for our students. And so I'm it's a tough one, because the financial situation that our families in our district are are realities. They're not easy right now. And so I recognize that that might not be as widely supported um as it has been in the past, because we traditionally do have very strong support for our levies. Um, but I don't want to take that for granted, and I don't want to um assume that people can necessarily afford. Um, one thing that I would be curious to see, so I, let me finish my thought, sorry. I I would not necessarily want to go for the lowest dollar enough either, though. I think there's a happy medium somewhere there in the middle. Um, one of the things that um I'd be curious to see, Brett, is what this translates into for, say, some sample price points for houses, like what would this cost a family who owns, say, a five hundred thousand dollar, like, house value of five hundred thousand dollars? What would it look like in real dollars? And I know that there's such a huge variety of of what kind of property is owned in our district, but just to kind of see what that looks like in terms of what the tax bill would look like for a a family um in our district, because that is easier for me to kind of understand than just seeing these, these feel like very hypothetical dollar amounts to me. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, absolutely. And and so we can certainly create kind of a table of, you know, uh, I don't know that there is anything below three hundred thousand in our community or in terms of homes, but we can, we can start at a certain point and just go every hundred thousand dollars up just as a hypothetical and then apply these rates um into the kind of the annual tax bill, for sure. That's that's easy enough to do. We typically do that in terms of some of the um information that we submit or share with the public after the resolution's done, so we can just certainly advance that work now.
Okay, thank you very much.
Um, and I would just agree with Wendy, just um I think a happy medium would be good. I don't, I think over the two-dollar mark, this is pushing it right now, um, but thank you, Brett. I appreciate your time with all of this.
Oh, no problem.
Well, I'll just chime in. Um, I think with the combination of our current inflation issues and also um some uncertainty about the stability of the employment market, a few things here and there that are making people nervous, along with the incredible uptick in the um assessed values of our homes, I think are making a lot of people, particularly those of our community that are on fixed income um, a little nervous. And uh I think we need to add, and that the, those are typically the people that are so supportive, you know, the elderly, um, the retired, you know, people that are retired, they're so supportive of our education. And I want us to kind of respond in kind and say, you know, you've been so supportive and um we want to be responsible in what we ask from you at this time, when things are just a little uncertain. So I would, well, not the lowest, um, one of those two options in the middle, I think, looks good to me at this point.
Thank you all. It's great to just hear you weigh in with initial thoughts on on the presentation and appreciate the um the deliberation, I know that in your mind of trying to weigh these outcomes, because you know that um student needs are are great um and still trying to um be respectful of the tax burden as well and the trust that the community has placed in us. The uh, the other question I had was about some of that strategy of checking in with the community. Um, are board directors comfortable with kind of a a multi-tiered approach, um, kind of honoring the past and and then thinking about what we could do in the future too with a new campaign? Okay, I'm seeing some head nods with that. So I know Jessica Roberts, our new communication director, is on this evening um listening in intently as well um and trying to uh figure out what does that strategy looks like. Um, but I think the the great opportunity we have is, um, you know, there's a lot of things that we got to work through this year with the levy renewal and and uh strategic planning and boundary decision potentially. But it's also a great opportunity to just bring people together in general and talk about the state of the district and what they would like to see in the future and and how do we um get a roadmap to lead, to lead that feature together? So lots of good opportunities for us, and it's helpful to hear from you tonight. Um, any other comments on the levy situation? Okay, so then a couple of takeaways that I heard, and I'll turn it back to Brett too for anything that you have final, is to kind of give some breakdowns of of the impact of those tax rates on on home values, property values in the community, and can bring those back to you at the regular September board meeting as well. Um, and uh, and then we'll also kind of start to work on a communication strategy and bring that to you just to make sure that you're comfortable with what we're doing. Um, Brett, any other takeaways that you?
No, I think that covers it. I appreciate it.
The other piece is that um you you saw the interactive tool that Brett's working on, and so our data team has been great about compiling that. And so the hope is that whenever um the board is ready to kind of give clear direction that we can have access to the community um so that they can drill down, just like Brett showed you, where do these levy dollars go and how do they impact our students? Um, we believe that the more informed a community is, then the better decision-making that they have the ability to make. So um, so that those tools will be rolled out too. We're kind of previewing those with you first, and then um we'll kind of narrow those down and hopefully make them as accessible as possible to the public. So I think um that's it for our content tonight, Director Barrows, so um I'll turn it back to you.
All right, um, I do not believe there's anything else. Um, and just uh for our community to be aware of, our next board meeting um is our regular meeting in September, and that um is the thirteenth, September thirteenth. So we do have a couple weeks between now and then, um, which I know I am in need of, because the, you know, back to school, um, there's a lot of activity around. So when we uh come back together for a regular board meeting in September, um, we will be well into a couple weeks into the school year. So um I hope everybody has a great start uh to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.